Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting of October 22nd, 2018. I'm Tom Jacobs and we're meeting and convening here at the Bennington Fire Facility on 130 River Street. As we do, I'd like to have everyone introduce themselves, maybe starting with our town manager, Stu Hurd, is right to our far right.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. I am town manager, Stu Hurd.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Connor.
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
I'm Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Nancy Lively, secretary.
Great. Thanks, one and all, for coming out in this getting used to dark nights or evenings. We start with a pledge of allegiance. Chad, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Chad. Are you getting the signup sheet? Yes. Okay. We have a time where we offer the opportunity to the community to have a discussion with the board. This evening, there's no signup, so we'll get right into the consent agenda. We have circulated the minutes of the October 8th meeting along with the warrants, which have been reviewed by all of us, I hope. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as circulated.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion relative to any additions, changes, or corrections, nancies. Pick them all up, I expect. They look, as ever, they look really good. It's very easy to follow, and sometimes I wonder how you could ever do it, following some of our discussions, really. Well, if everyone is satisfied, let's vote on the consent agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
Seven in favor of the adoption of the consent agenda and no objections. We have the principal, excuse me, the privilege tonight of visiting with. Jim, would you like to do the introductions?
Hello. Good evening. I'm just going to speak briefly. It is my honor to introduce to the Bennington Select Board, I hesitate to say new because he has been with us since July, but the newer principal of Mount Anthony Union High School, Steve Nixon. I've asked him to introduce himself and give a little bio of who he is.
Great, that's great. Thanks very much for the introduction. And Steve, welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting.
Thank you.
And also, you're probably glad to be off the island now and all the tourists have left. Couple of years ago, that was probably a little different situation, right?
But I'm quite happy where I am.
Great. If you could, just give us a little bit of where you came from and your now, what you're doing here, and what's your hope and expectation for the future? Because all this is, is a discussion, conversation. We're not looking for anything, and we're assuming you're not looking for anything. Just to talk about and introduce yourself so that when we see you at budget time and the like, you'll be able to address us all by our first names and likewise, Steve, so you're welcome.
Sure. Thank you very much, and thank you for having me.
Sure.
I grew up originally in New Jersey, and that's where I began my education career. I was a history teacher for several years in New Jersey. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in history, and that was one of my passions. And then several years into doing that, my wife and I moved to Massachusetts. And while I was in Massachusetts, I continued as a history teacher. We stayed there for about 20 years. And then I went out and I got my doctorate in education, and I moved up to being a dean of students, and then an assistant principal, and then a principal. And I really had no intentions of doing anything beyond that. And one day, out of the blue, I saw the ad for the job here in Bennington. For the past 30 years or so, I've been coming to Vermont on vacation. I've been to Bennington many, many times before I moved here. And I always loved Vermont. I loved this area. I recall distinctly having breakfast in Jensen's back in 1980, I think it was, the first time that I came here. And when I saw the ad, it sort of was a tug at my heart to have the opportunity to come here. And when I started researching the school, I saw that, I felt with the strengths that I had as a principal in my experience in education, that my strengths matched up with what the school needed at this time. And so I put my hat in the ring and got the position, and my wife and I moved here, and we bought a home, and we moved in in July. And it's been a great experience. Now, the Bennington, I remember from 30 years ago, it's an interesting juxtaposition. There are some things that have not changed at all since I've been here, and there are some things that have. And some of the things that I see makes me think about the future. And when I think about the future of Bennington, I think about the young people that are in the building that I work in every day. And those students are the future of this town. And as much as I care about this town, I care even more about its future. And I feel it's my job and the staff's job at the high school to do everything that we possibly can to prepare those students for the future, so that they can move into the community as leaders in the future and strengthen this community and make this a great place for many, many years to come. So if I had a vision for what my job is at the high school, it's for all of us, community, school, staff, parents, and students, to pull together to make sure that every one of our students, from those who are going into the business world, to those who are going into the military, to those who are going on to college, to be as prepared and successful as they can be, so that in the future, we have a strong base and this community can get stronger. That's why I came, and that's what my goal is for the future.
It's interesting. When we had requested you participate in the agenda tonight, I just wrote down a couple of adjectives or otherwise, and the question was, what's your vision? And you've articulated it so well and so clearly, because that really somewhat reflects why the seven of us sit around this board, because we're interested, concerned, and hopeful about the opportunities for our entire community. But our community is buttressed by our students and our educational system. And we're fortunate to have someone that, like yourself, that is willing to come and take the reins, because I'm sure there are going to be challenging times. Students of today are different than the students of yesterday, apparently, because there are more demands on them in so many different ways. Social media and the like make their lives more challenging and complex. And I'm sure as an administrator of the school, you're going to be involved more and more in that type of activity. We've got a great history here. Our athletic programs have been superlative and led by really fine people. Our teachers have been outstanding. I'm sure Jim could speak to it, but we've been so fortunate at just every level, with sometimes limited resources, to have teachers that have given so much of themselves to this community. And what it means, I think, is the future is bright, but the challenges are many. Other folks on the board like to just?
I've got a few questions.
Just don't ask me any budget questions.
I won't. You know, for the last several years, I've been working with a company out of Manchester and working with some very young people in their late teens and early twenties. And there happened to be a program on NPR about civics. And in the polling that they did, and in the young people, there were three 20-somethings, very young 20-somethings in the car who couldn't identify or explain the significance of the year 1776, couldn't, didn't know why the Civil War was fought, or who won. And my question to you is, you know, I think we've seen it in the last couple of years, that there is a dearth, there is a drought with respect to an understanding of civics. And I wonder what kind of influence you, as a principal, would have in either bringing it back or, you know, strengthening it within our community? Because I think it's vital to what it means to be a competent and successful citizen.
Sure. Being an old history teacher is, unfortunately, in probably the last decade or so, history has sort of been watered down into the social sciences where they try to cover a lot of material in a lot of different areas, economics, geography, government, history, in more of a cramped time period than they did previously. And that's unfortunate. And I understand totally that there's a large push through STEM programs, science, technology, engineering, and math. And science and math seem to be the area that's getting the spotlight in the last 10 years or so. And when you add math and science classes, it's usually at the expense of something else. And we've had those discussions already at the high school, and I totally hear what you're saying. If my vision of students become the community and the leaders of the community, they have to know the process and how to be involved in the process in order to be successful. I'm also, being an old history teacher, very familiar with the concept of, if you don't know anything about history, then it's doomed to repeat itself. And I think a lot of people, not just in the revolutionary time period, but a lot of people in the modern age, did a lot of sacrificing. There's a lot of parents and adults in this community today who are doing a lot of sacrificing for their students to be successful. And it's important for the students to appreciate that and to know why. So in direct answer to your question, in having discussions with the history department, we are planning on adding a government course in the fall that will attach itself specifically to those issues that you just brought up.
And this will be a required course for each student?
It will be in the catalog that all students, we can make it a graduation requirement, but that's a much more complicated process right now, because when you change the graduation requirements, it's a little bit more difficult to do than just to add a course. So once we add the course and structure the course, and then we can target an incoming class, say a freshman class, in a year or two, and say, beginning in that year, that could have the potential to become a graduation requirement.
Well, I share your love of history, and my strengths were always history and literature. But I think it is absolutely fundamentally so important for the students and the generations that are going to follow us to have a basic understanding of the Constitution, how we got here, why it's important to vote, you know, all the things that you and I, and I think most people around this table, have embraced all our lives. And it's fundamental to our democracy.
And I think it's also important, aside from classwork, in the Act 77, the new Act in Vermont with flexible pathways. That's an important thing, to get students out into the real world and to have students meet individuals like you. Because learning about civics and the operations of government in a book is one thing. Coming to a meeting like this, or speaking to you all individually and actually seeing it in action, has a far greater impact than anything that can be done in the classroom.
Well, then let me be the first to volunteer on the board. If I can have some role with your students, I would be more than happy to do that.
Then let me take you up on that, Jim.
Yeah. But the other part of this, that I've often thought that it would be advisable and helpful to the board, maybe to do some outreach, inviting students or classes or something into a meeting, particularly one that has particular interests, maybe. Some of these are pretty boring and mung.
Never.
But sometimes they're interesting, especially when you get a pro and con debate going, just to expose them to it. And maybe we should reach out, make sure that that's happened. And I've seen some towns that actually have a position, it's like the ex officio position to a member of the high school, that they can, if they're so interested, they could actually have a chair at the table.
Well, our seminar class, you know, being in this unique position I'm in, even today, they were talking about the Putnam Project, and being able to answer questions and pull up stuff. So I think our seminar, you know, I can't be in every seminar, but if some, you know, if we could set up something in seminar and have people come and visit, that 15 minutes is just great to talk about things going on in town.
I'd love to be a part of that. We can definitely organize something like that.
Good. Go ahead.
Jeannie, are you, am I cutting you off if I?
No, I'll just say hi, and I'm really happy you're here.
Jeannie was one of the first people that I met. It was my first day on the job, I met Jeannie.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, how thrilling is it to have somebody come here and say that they vacationed here from Martha's Vineyard?
I love that.
I love that. Yeah, maybe the beginning of a new wave of Martha's Vineyard people who just can't stand it and want to come vacation in Bennington. So I'm interested to hear about, that you brought up the individual pathways in Act 77. Seems like there's a lot of thought about that right now. And I wonder if there, I have two questions for you. One is, I wonder if there was anything like that in Massachusetts? Or if there's anything, any lessons learned that we could be pulling from that in the state? I don't know enough about it, so. And then the second thing relates a little bit to Jim's point on democracy, but I had a very interesting conversation with one of the Bennington College deans, and they're really working hard on a course that pulls back the veil on social media and the influence of a lot of the different digital sources of information that people get, and how it's affecting our elections, and how it's affecting our communities, and how it's affecting the integrity. And I guess a lot of that is something that takes time to kind of be revealed, but Bennington College is making quite a stab at that, and I wonder if there's anything like that happening at the high school.
Yes, social media and technology in general is growing so quickly. It's one of those things that, as soon as you plan for something, it's transitioned into something else. The superintendent's office this year has hired Derek Carson, who has been very valuable to us as far as getting information out there and getting a Facebook page and our webpage up to date. It's where most young people go for their news, and that's where, again, I hate to keep, you know, beating the drum for history, but one of the things that I've always taught my students is, you can't take things that you find on the internet at face value. You have to teach the students good research and to be able to determine what is truthful and valuable information, otherwise you can be misled. And I'm sure we see this all the time in the news, how someone will put something out there and it's taken as fact. And the term fake news just seemed contradictory, you know, many, many years ago, because news was supposed to be neutral, and news was supposed to be the truth. And now it's not, so it makes you question everything. And I think it comes back to teaching students to be wary of what they read, where they get it from, but most importantly, to develop their own opinion. And to go out and look for their own facts and not just feed on what someone else feeds them. So technology in all its forms is an ongoing thing. It's a blessing in one way for students, the concept that you can find answers to questions at the tips of your fingers, rather than trekking to a library and spending hours there as in the past. But once you find the information, where's it coming from and how valuable is it? So that's, instead of the information being important, the actual researcher is important, because you can't accept everything as fact. As far as Act 77, was there anything like that in Massachusetts? There was some discussions near the end of my time there, when they were talking about proficiency. There was a lot of work on priority-based standards. The, Massachusetts was very bureaucratic in a way about some things, and there was a lot of work done on the MCAS test, which is used there for graduation purposes. And many, many years of that being fine-tuned to determine, you know, what was going to be offered, when it was going to be offered. But nothing to the extent of the parts of Act 77 that, it's sort of distressing to me that two of the best parts of that act are the ones that we hear very little about. I know a lot of people, when I came here, were speaking about proficiency-based learning, about the grading, and about proficiency standards and graduation requirements. But I think the two fascinating components are the flexible pathways, that students can actually, like I said earlier, learn hands-on, out in the community, from people doing the job who are going to guide them in that role in the future. Because that attaches to every student, that's just not college-bound students. I'm a firm believer, and have always been a firm believer, in it's our job to determine what a student's passion is and to make sure that that passion is served. And if we can't do it in the building, then we need to do it outside of the building. And now that that is a law, that just makes it easier for us to do that. And I think that's a wonderful thing. Because to go through four years of high school, just being told what you were going to learn, if you have a deep-seated burning passion for something that everyone's denying you, I call it the run-home moment, that when you left school, you used to run home to do or look for whatever, because the adults weren't giving it to you where you were. And I think this changes that. And for those students who want to go to college, or just students who want to push themselves further, the fact that in junior and senior year, you can do that. So I think those are the two components, because it covers all students. We've had some discussions with industry people here in Bennington, and the jobs are there. It's making the connections with the students and making sure that we at the high school and at the CDC give them everything that they need to be transitioned into that workforce. And students who have a passion and want to move at a quicker rate and go to college can start doing that in junior year. So I think those are the two aspects of Act 77 that are really, really important, but are probably getting the least, I guess I would say, publicity.
Yeah. That's great. I'm so glad to hear you have enthusiasm for that. I think it's been somewhat misunderstood, but it feels like there's a tremendous amount of potential there. Kind of the old saw, tell me I forget, show me I remember, involve me I understand.
Sure.
And I love the idea of students being able to get involved in things in the community and really becoming deeply understanding of it. So, anyway, thank you, and welcome to Bennington. Glad to have you here.
Well, thank you for having me, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You guys okay?
Yes. Yeah. We got one, you know, yeah, these-
No, no, please don't sit back down. Looks like there's some questions.
We got the right one here. I mean, sorry, the folks on the right.
We haven't had the chance to meet. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you.
And the way you kind of opened this evening and sitting down and going through in detail where you were and your vision was, it's really moving. Reminds us why we sit on this board, and we appreciate you being here.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Hi, I'm from New Jersey, too, so I'm curious where you were raised and worked.
In a little scenic place called Forsake, which is right in between Newark and Patterson, the vacation spots of New Jersey.
Okay, just curious. I don't know when the relationship between the Select Board and the school district changed, but it did. I'm going to say maybe 10 years ago, where we developed a much closer relationship and we work with each other and we listen to each other. And I just, I think it's really, really beneficial, and I think it's something that I think we all take pride in and feel it is very, very important, and we would want it, obviously, to continue. And on a personal note, my kids went all through public school here, excuse me, including MAU, and had a great experience. They're long gone, but I still am pretty invested and interested and care deeply about the school district. Jeannie and I both served on a school board many, many moons ago, and it doesn't leave you. Once you've made that commitment, it sort of sticks with you and you can't quite walk away. So it's great to have you, and I really appreciate the fact that you came here tonight to meet with us. And you'll be seeing me around.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Really, we want to have our children that grow up here, you know, stay and play here and work. And that's really a challenge that we all have, industry has, and I'm sure the educational front. But whatever we can do to make that pathway easier and more direct, the resources are here. I think the resources are brain power and willpower. So we want to make sure that this is not just an introduction and a meet and greet, it's actually continues, as Jeannie says, that the school and the town, we're both in, we're all in this together. And so if we can use those assets that we have to make dreams possible with your leadership, we look forward to that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Steve. Appreciate it. And Jim, thanks for the intro.
I agree with my lady.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, I don't think the board should forget about that student intern or participation, you know, in the future. I mean, it should be something-
They'll take your spot.
Yeah, exactly. Easy to do.
Excellent.
You got it. We got to cheer here.
May I?
There's no age limit. There is no age limit on who can serve an-.
No, this is right. And that was, we intentionally put in the charter that way. The next item is the citizens' survey, our initial discussion on it. It was in a packet. I think, first, my observation is that the Xerox team did a great job. It took the earlier versions of what have gone before this, and I think this is like the third round, isn't it? Maybe second, yeah, because we did the businesses and then the citizens and so. But this seems to be much more clear, direct, concise, and easier interactively with-
And shorter.
And shorter, yeah. And I think it'll be easier for the-
The questions having to do with where you live, what is your income, those kinds of personal questions that, the first time around, I heard from people who were upset that we were trying to get that information from them and what we were going to do with it. And so I think when we looked, there were three or four questions that we looked at those and said, let's pull them out of there, because they're really not about your opinion. They're really seeking factual information that people may not want to disclose.
I think that is a really good, good point. Why don't we just, we don't have to go through each and every one, because it doesn't make a lot of sense, because it's obvious. I think what management is looking for are suggestions and how we might address some of the areas up. And I think one in particular deals with the Select Board and criteria on measuring value and the like. So I see that Jeannie had shared some thoughts with Xerox that she thought might be good points, bullet points to go in. Why don't you share that?
Well, I mean, in terms of rating our performance?
Yeah.
It felt like responsiveness to public input might be a useful thing to have some feedback on. I don't know exactly how to frame it, but just whether we seem to be articulating a vision for the town, and actually, Donald, I think you may have had some very good language around that. And then-
I didn't give it to her yet.
Okay, okay. And then, just, are we providing leadership on issues that are facing the town? So it's sort of responsiveness, leadership, and vision.
I would think that, go ahead.
Oh, and then the only other thing I was going to say is, I think we did have a place where people could just put their thoughts at the end, which I don't see on this one. And it was, you know, it's optional, obviously, if you want to leave a comment, but I'm just wondering if we want to have a comment section in case something isn't covered that citizens might want to respond to.
Were those utilized in the past?
Yeah, yeah.
They were.
And sometimes it became a chance to really vet.
Give them a short section.
Yep. And it's sort of like, all this other stuff doesn't mean much, but here's what I want to tell you about this town. And parts of it were helpful and parts of it were not. What I liked about this one, it sort of directs the focus. So if we do have that last section of any other comments that you would like to make because the question wasn't asked, I think that makes sense, just not a, you know, whole page of it because, go ahead.
The comment I had, there were several questions here that I didn't feel like I could answer. Specifically, I remember reading a few about accessibility to childcare. I just know what I hear, but I really can't answer that. So there didn't seem to be an option, don't know, or no-
Yeah, not applicable or NA.
Just not part of my world.
That's a good, good point.
Yeah, that's, that was the one comment. Sort of a general comment.
Because it actually takes, if you try to answer it without the information or the background, it's like worthless and it skews the-
And she may just say, if you can't answer it, leave it blank. You know, and that's fine, too.
If it's not applicable.
Yeah, or NA or something.
So not applicable would be adding a fourth column?
Yeah.
Or it may be easier at the beginning of each one if if you feel you can't answer because you don't have any experience to guide you, then just leave it blank. I don't know, whatever would work for her as far as she's going to, how she's going to tally the data.
Okay.
It would be interesting to hear what she says about that.
Other suggestions or additions to any of the areas?
I have a couple of very small things. We may, it may be left off because we were still in transition about it a little bit, but I wonder if in number 11, we should add the Y Woods to that in terms of what people would like to see happening there.
Well, that's a great suggestion.
And on number 12, again, recreation, kind of park facilities, it feels like we could add a few categories there. And I might suggest access to nature such as trails or interpretation, a dog park, parking, additional parking. And it does feel like we should have another category there because it's, everybody recreates differently outdoors. And I guess the last one on that is that the middle bullet on the second, on the right-hand column says improved bike-ped access, which is true, that's what it is, but it also, I'm not sure everybody would have the same feeling as that if you said trails. Or if you said something that was a little bit more, a little closer to how people use it.
Pathways.
Pathways and trails or something like that. And I think that was it for me, except that I do feel strongly that in the vision piece, we should, we should invite people to comment on the, whether or not the town plan, which is our vision, speaks to them. And it would be nice to have a link to the town plan at that point because that that really is our vision for the community and that's something that we spent a lot of time working on. And I, I'm not sure how many people read it because it's so long, but at very least, I'd like for those people that have read it and have thoughts about it to have an opportunity to weigh in on on our vision as stated in the town plan.
As stated, because I hear more than one comment, the Select Board's supposed to create the vision for the community. And I've got it, town plan really is the vision document. And if you look at it, you'll see what we hope to have developed. And I think that's a great cross-reference to maybe direct folks to that area. Is that something that you could-
Yeah, I've been jotting down the comments. We could try to work them all in. I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't be appropriate.
Great.
It makes it 15 minutes and not 10.
Can I make one more comment?
Oh, please.
As far as the section on the Select Board, I would be interested in knowing if people are aware of when we meet, where we meet, do they have access to watch our meetings on TV, do they attend meetings?
Yeah, I thought there was something, at least it alluded to that, attending-
Maybe there isn't, I just forgot.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought there was like one question about Select Board.
Yeah, but one, but then it talks about meetings. Have you gone to, have you been attending any municipal meetings or other?
Oh.
You know, there's that.
Yeah, it's in another section.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's number 23, by the way.
Well, that's the Select Board part.
Right.
I guess to me, it speaks to are we reaching the community more directly if if they don't know where we meet, when we meet, that they can watch it on cat TV?
Yeah, I thought the Xerox, it all did a really good job of focusing on, have you attended, have you got access to? There are a couple, and I'm trying to remember where it is, but I thought it was pretty-
Okay.
It's number 23.
Yeah, Jim answered.
Yeah, it was 23, it's okay.
What?
It's just not as focused on the Select Board, but if you're happy with that, that's fine.
Yeah, this is a, this is a great improvement. And it's clear that less is more, is that what they say? Or if I had more time, I would have written a shorter letter or something like that. And it's nice that this is really pared down to a more manageable length.
One comment that actually Jim shared with me before the meeting, is one of the suggestions is to offer more opportunities for your opinion. As we, in this, we provide only three. And it's suggested, and you folks have already touched on, I don't know column perhaps. And maybe there's something in between, does not meet expectations, meets or exceeds expectations. Maybe there's a, maybe there's a fifth column that we should add that gives people a little bit more choice as to whether, what they really think.
Except we did that last time and it was hard.
Well, but we used, we used incredibly odd terms.
We used different language.
You need a definition section when the last-
I think we could use five again if we use nice, simple headings for it. I do like the idea of having a don't know category.
Yeah.
And that what was offered was a constituent who has some experience in marketing and surveys and what it refers to is Likert scale that offers a spectrum on a line of five different choices. So I hope that Stu and Xerox will take a look at that.
Certainly will.
And the one question that I had for, or my concern, and I mentioned this last year when we got our results, and that is where we're putting the surveys. I thought that, you know, churches, the library would be great places to get a good sampling. And I hope we'll do that.
I think, yeah, let's talk about logistics and I just, let's stay with the party. Done, done.
Good.
Yes.
I've talked to a lot of people and I said, why don't you go to the meetings? They said, because-
And maybe, could you come over to the mic just a second, because I'm having a hard time hearing. I know you love it.
Rose hates the mic.
Go ahead, Rose.
Oh, my goodness. All right. I've talked to a lot of people and I said, why don't you go to the meetings? I said, you know, you find out what's going on. But a lot of them says, I really don't think they care what you got to say. I mean, that was pretty much a lot of people. They don't, they just think you just don't care.
We don't know without them being here.
You know, I don't know if you know what they say, but I've talked to a lot of people. And they said, what good does it do?
Well, Rose, you can tell them for me that we, I wouldn't be sitting here if what you say and what they think isn't important. So you just tell them and they can call me anytime. It does matter what they think.
Is the time of the meetings bad or something, do you think?
No, they just think it don't do no good to come, so they don't come.
Well, Rose, you can be our advocate. You can be our advocate.
I know. No.
Rose, I think we should take our meetings on the road.
Cool.
Bad idea.
Serious.
You know, that's not a bad idea. The senior center.
Senior center.
Bowling alley.
Rec center.
I think that's a good idea.
I started volunteering at the library today in North Bennington.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I think that's a great idea.
It has to be someplace that can TV though.
Well, they can plug it anywhere.
No, they can't.
But, but no.
It was hard work.
There in the library.
But, you know, sometimes it has to be recorded, it's not live. But that's probably a really good suggestion moving forward. Doesn't mean that, you know, we have two meetings a month, you know, four times a year off-campus. I think then you go to where the people are, so it makes it a little easier. And that'd be fine with me.
I love the idea.
I do, too.
Love it.
Rotating biological contactors in person.
Kill many birds with one stone.
Just let me know the schedule of head attack.
That's a great idea.
Occasionally, ours is injured.
Is that something you think we should put in the survey to ask the question if they would see any benefit to that?
Interesting idea.
Yeah.
I don't think-
I decided it was more- I think we should just try it. We should just try it.
Yep, okay. Good.
I figured it would be more fun doing something like that. I used to work in the library at school and don't need all that drama. I've had enough of it.
That's helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think, let's, timeline for rolling this out.
What we'll do is try to incorporate the suggestions that were tonight. I'll email you a copy just to let you know that we've done our best to get what you want in there and then try to get it out in the first part of November. And I think if we're going to, if we're going to leave this out for five to six weeks so that we have the feedback before budget time, it would be helpful. So we're starting to come under the gun to get it out there.
So why don't we, the board, not even wait for that to come out? If you've got some things to add or suggest to Xerox tomorrow, write off, get us, get it right out. And I think that's a great idea. Then going to Jim's question or thought, how do we make sure we get it the broadest?
Cross-section.
Distribution is key. I know the last time we did this, there was a concern that it would be, the handwritten surveys, the ones that are handed out at the town offices or elsewhere are harder to collate and transmit into the scoring that the online survey does automatically for you. But I tend to agree. I think not everybody has access to a computer and we tend to leave those people out in a lot of things.
What about, maybe this is a Cassie-type question, to have them at the polls?
At the polls, we did that the last time.
Yeah.
We had the survey, we had people at the polls with computers to help keep it filled up.
That's right.
Yeah.
They did, yes.
Or, or they could take them.
Yeah, we got time to pull back.
Yeah.
Stuart, I don't know if this is a possibility, but reaching out to Frank Barnes, the director of technology for the school district, they've got Chromebooks on carts if there's a public event or something, if they could bring a cart where people have access and it's just they can do it right there and have that access to the technology. You know, they've got a ton of carts. We're even opening a school and having it in the lobby for a bit.
That's great.
And I'm assuming there'll be some sort of a press release that-
Yeah.
For the, okay, good.
That's up to your discretion.
So hope is to get this out first, early part of November?
Yep.
Keep it open for about a month?
Yeah, well, months to six weeks. Probably bring it back in early December, mid-December.
Then January, go right to budget, which is, will be helpful.
So we really do want it out by November 1st or so, so that it's out before voting? Yeah?
Yeah.
So that's a, two weeks?
Two weeks. I have an amazing staff. You folks just don't understand.
We know you have an amazing staff.
It's good.
Anything else relative to the citizen survey? Okay. Let's move on to the manager's report.
I have no action items here tonight. Just want to make an announcement. Bennington opioid group will be attending this board meeting on November 12th to talk a little bit about their work in finding solutions to the opioid problem in Bennington and in the surrounding area. As you know, the, and I think most of the agencies now have received the new funding requests. It's a little less burdensome as far as providing audits and balance sheets, but it, we tried to focus on what is your budget and how did you meet your budget over the last three years? And what are your goals? Hopefully, it'll be packets that are relatively concise that we can get to you all during the budget process.
Are we going to acknowledge, are we going to acknowledge the receipt of their information and if there are any gaps and also to invite them to the-
Yes, we'll, we'll do our best to get back to people who fall short.
Well, but also people that that do what they should so that they, so that everyone that meets the requirement knows to come to the-
Floor meeting, yeah.
The floor meeting, yeah.
I think that's an important part of this.
I do, yeah.
Sell, this is a selling process.
We'll, we'll do our best, I can tell you that.
Yeah, okay.
And then I know there was an article, lead article on the front page of the banner today about single-use plastic bags and the ban of those.
Yeah.
And as I indicated in my report, the Alliance, which is the 13-town consortium that is handling our solid waste issues here, had a discussion about that at their last meeting and they, I think, plan to take this up over the winter. And it would be nice if they would come up with a model ordinance that all 13 towns could then adopt.
Yeah.
Much as we adopted some of the other ordinances that the Alliance has sponsored so that as a county, we're moving forward together with one voice and not this kind of disparity.
Different regulations in each town, right? I think that's a great idea. If we don't like what they come up with, we can do our own thing, but let's see what they come up with.
Yeah. And I think because there are a lot of folks, college students, that are interested in this particular, and it might get more broad involvement. You know, Rattleboro's apparently got a great template.
Rattleboro, both in Wilmington, tend to adopt that ordinance as we just did.
I just think it's, you know, going town by town by town.
Yeah.
When it really is a state or a statewide or a federal issue, it's always difficult to try to do that. That's all I've got.
Okay. Other business?
I would just like to announce, I'm sorry the principal from the high school is gone, but the high school's performing Les Mis November 8th through 10th. Tickets go on sale next week. And I just want to say it's so exciting to walk around and see the pocket park happening, merchants park happening, the top of Silver Street is being developed, and the demolition of Greenberg's. It is awesome.
It really is.
Top in town. Really exciting. Really exciting. That's it.
Plus the paving is-
And the paving is almost done. Actually, they're painting the lines as we speak. Yeah.
Nothing more?
Just a reminder to vote, and I've got to give you a quick anecdote. Tim Corcoran delivered my father's eulogy and he said, my father only lost two elections in one by one vote. And as some of you may know, my father was the chairman of the board for almost 50, Board of Civil Authorities for almost 50 years. And he was buttoning up the election results from that one race where he lost by one vote. And younger Tim Corcoran came up and he said, Joe, what the hell happened? You lost by one vote. And my father said, quick as a wit as he ever was, said, Tim, I don't know what happened. He said, but I've got two sisters and one of them didn't vote. And it wouldn't be right for me to tell you who didn't vote, but it wasn't Helen. So your vote matters. Your vote matters. That's it.
Stuart, I have a category of almost forgotten things in the back of my mind. I don't know if it's too late, but a while ago, Green Lantern, I think, put together a proposal for, I hate to mention it, but a solar facility on the transfer station. And we didn't really take it up or consider it because it was, we wanted to have a request for proposal and get the most competitive bid out there and try to maximize our opportunities. Is there any, before things really get tough with the solar panels, is there any point in looking into that now? Could we fire up an RFP for that during the winter and be thinking about-
I think over the winter would be an ideal time to give us time to put together something that might have some meaning. I would look to my staff to assist with that and see what we can get out.
Okay, well, I for one, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
Yeah.
RFP to death over the last several months with the garages and everything else that we've been trying to get out and get bid and get to all that stuff. we've been trying to get out and get, get bid and get going, so.
It might be worth seeing, I mean, Green Lantern gave a, gave a presentation to the BSD board about, uh, doing a project in Pownell at the landfill there, that would be a community solar project for BSD and others. So it might be nice just to see their timing. We may have staff that know that timing, but, you know, 'cause I'm just worried about they're gonna be.
I guess I would be interested in not losing an opportunity, if there is one, to use that, use that space, which we can't use for anything else, for all renewable energy if possible. Thank you. That's it for me.
So Jim, I'm surprised you didn't mention this, but isn't there a candidate's forum tomorrow night at 6:00? The AAW?
There is, but I'm not gonna be able to make it. I'm working really late and a lot of hours, and I might.
So the American Association of University Women is holding a candidate forum here tomorrow night at 6:00?
I'll try to get out of it, but.
6:30, thank you. At 6:30, and it will be a really great time to hear from all our candidates and hear their positions, and I'm sure they're all gonna be here.
We might, but I'll do, I'll do my best to get here.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, the public's invited, and I think it is one of the few opportunities we have to hear, you know, people's positions, so, yeah.
Is that on cat TV?
What?
Great, 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 great.
I'm gonna piggyback on the Les Mis announcement. They do double casts, so if you buy tickets, the Thursday show and Friday show are different casts, and, so the Friday night and Saturday night are the same, Thursday and Saturday matinee are the same cast. So my son's in it, he's been raving about it, so go see it. Tomorrow at the high school is the opening round of the playoffs. We have one home playoff game, girls soccer at 3:00 PM. They host Rutland, should be a good game. And I want to congratulate the Bennington Minutemen senior team, the fifth and sixth graders, won the Super Bowl yesterday. Their first time ever winning the youth Super Bowl since they've joined the NYFL. I went over to Brunswick and watched the game yesterday, and they beat an undefeated, they upset the Skylerville team, and, great game. You know, it was, it was good to see these young guys out there and just playing good games.
Getting them fit.
It's great. I'm already recruiting, yes, I am. They look great.
He's scouting.
Yep. The, the New York league's a great league, they get to travel all over, it's like an all-star league for football at the youth level. They looked really good yesterday, so congratulations. And their coach, Ken Mailhahn, does a great job, and Mont Anthony Grad, he's doing a great job with that program.
Fantastic. The Fall Fun Day was really a success, brought to you by Grove Bennington at all. Not only was it a great event, put together relatively fast, but these individuals, it's amazing what they have done in a short period of time to talk about Grove Bennington, they are really, you know, street lighters out there. And the energy resources that they're bringing to task, that's why we have this, this activity downtown. It's that, going back to the public-private partnership, well, this is where that private sector has really stepped up, and so impressive to see. And if I mention one name, it would be to the detriment of not mentioning the whole group, because it's so, so dynamic. And so I can't wait to see what the next, the next project is coming down the, the pipe.
Didn't you and Jim serve macaroni and cheese all day?
Yes, we did. And Jeanie was there.
The highlight, I was cleaning the, the mac and cheese.
No, the highlight was the band.
The band was.
Oh, my gosh.
The Look Back, is that what they're called?
Throwbacks. This group of high school students, oh, my goodness.
They were really good.
The outside fire pit was the best, actually.
I never got out there.
I like the turkey chili.
It was.
It was a great day.
A great, a great day.